For November the 12th, 2024. I feel stand. I'll ask Mr. Buster Tarr to say the prayer and I'll lead us in the pledge.
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we come once again to you tonight just thanking you for all the many blessings that you give to us. While we thank you for this week and the fact that we appreciate veterans and what they did and to keep us free. What we ask you now to be with us as we make decisions for our school system. Help us give us wisdom that would be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Would you say the pledge along with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see the agenda in front of you. I would like to take a point of privilege and put a 4A there, I mean 4B. It's recognition of our superintendent. This will be his last regular meeting. He's retirement and I'll go ahead and tell you retirement's gray. Retirement time goes a whole lot faster than work time. I found that out in the last 15 years. All right, Ms. Nelson, do you feel?
Ms. Porter, Ms. Edwards.
All right.
Well, we're gonna try to surprise you tonight. Try to see and give you a little token of love, but most of all, we wanted to let you know that we appreciate the service that you've done for us. We're gonna miss you. And you know, all of the tough times you like, oh, you see us coming, but this basket is for you. The basket contains some socks and a blanket. And therefore, when you're getting old and sitting in your retirement care and it's so cold and your blood aren't circulating in your body like it used to because you're not moving about. So that's why I bought you some arthritis cream, some absorbent Junior. And I even bought you some Citroen vitamins because you're gonna be sitting in that recliner, eating those snacks and not letting your blood circulate and not exercising. So, but the best part is your Christmas gift. We got your Christmas gift in here. It's some Old Spice. So you, we want you to enjoy this basket and with love and tender care. And don't forget, I got you some Soakin's solution in there. So when you're sitting about and you're thinking about us and all the stress just falls off you and the weight just gains on you, just know we love you. And then we want to, in honor, give you this plaque. Read it. Read it. I'll let Brandon read it. I've done enough talking.
In honor of Superintendent Bert Smith, 30 years of distinguished service in education, with deep gratitude for your unwavering dedication, visionary leadership, and lifelong commitment to the field of education. Your tireless efforts have shaped countless lives, leaving a lasting legacy of excellence and inspiration. Thank you for guiding us, growing us, and believing in the power of education. Congratulations on your retirement, November 2024.
Come on. We have to drag him along. Come on. This is a woman's thing. I forgot the best part. This is a storage bin so he can put his beer cans in. I'm sorry.
I just appreciate the opportunity this Board of Education gave me to sit in this seat. Almost six years, well, it started my sixth year. It's been a challenge. I think, I know Mr. D spoke at Mr. Mooneyhand's service and I think the word was consuming. And I think that's an appropriate word. But I see a lot of folks in here. Thank you for the opportunity to work with you along this time. It's been challenges. It's been a butt rewarding and it's, so I'll probably use some of that medication. Anyway, again, thank you to this Board of Education. I just appreciate that. Y'all took a chance on me and I appreciate it. So thank y'all very much.
And all that, I forgot to have the agenda approved. It will either be A or B, whichever you want, Ms. Eric. You've had a chance to look over the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second it.
All right, Mr. Buster Tarr made the motion. Choose one of the others.
Tony.
Tony, okay. I couldn't, you know, getting older, you can't hear as well as you used to could. Yeah, what'd you say? Anyway, any discussion? Here and now in all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Superintendent, item number five.
And as we transition, I'd like to bring up the new superintendent, Dr. Lynn Barber. He's going to make a couple of presentations for A and B. And C.
Maybe.
On the agenda.
Well, good evening. It's good to be able to make presentations with this kind of crowd to see them all. You know, we've lumped October, Novembers together, but that's okay because we're gonna have more fun tonight. First of all, I'd like to say with this first presentation, one thing we, we tried to emphasize in the Ware County School District is the why we are preparing a student for an education. It's not just to walk across the stage at graduation. We tell every staff member, you work in workforce development. No matter if you teach kindergarten, algebra, science, British literature, whatever it may be, you are preparing a student for their future career. And we hope, we want to prepare students to go anywhere in the world they want to go, but it's always good when they will come back way across from Ware County and put their knowledge and skills to work. A few years ago, the Georgia Department of Education rolled out something called an Economic Development Partnership distinction that school systems and communities could apply for. And that, one of the key components of that is to have a great partnership with your local workforce development team. Going to call, in just a moment, I'm going to call up Mr. Ruben Bauer, but when Mr. Ruben Bauer came on as our development authority head, that's one of the first things he mentioned to me. He said, hey, I've heard of this, let's go for it. And I said, great, I'm, we've been thinking about it as well. So we put together a team from the, the school district, CTA department. We worked with local industries because they had to be involved in the process. Ms. Callahan with our work-based learning program was very involved. And throughout this, we had to complete this application and have a site review from a team with the industry and DOE. And they looked at six components. I'll just mention those briefly. Our advisory committees, our programs that are industry certified, our work-based learning program alignment, how we emphasize employability, skill development, and this is pre-K through 12, not just at the high school level. Our pathway alignment with local industries and our culture of economic development within the school district. And that's something we continue to work on. This year, we rolled out the job of the week and that sent out pre-K through 12 with local job postings that teachers can emphasize the skills that they are teaching, whether those are hard skills, math, science, English, or soft skills, listening, communication, et cetera. And so we scrapped Octobers and changed. You know why? Because first of all, October was short and second of all, we took the ones we were going to do and we swapped it to tree surgeon and lineman. So anyway, having said that, I want to bring Jason up to say a few words on behalf of the Development Authority and then I'll mention the presentation of the award.
Thank you, Dr. Barber. Good evening, everyone. Just like Dr. Barber was saying, the Economic Development Partnership is an extremely critical component for what we've got in this community to, first of all, take care of our existing workforce. If we don't take care of the workforce that we have in our community, they will and can go somewhere else. So having an educated workforce, which starts with our K through 12 system, is a critical component. And this Economic Development Partnership allows our teachers and our students to really understand what we have in our front yard besides what's coming in. We all want more business. We want more industry, but we've got to take care of what we have first. And so through this partnership and with what Ms. Bennet Callahan does with the workforce learning that she has, it really ties both the educators and students into our existing industry. And then we go into the second part of what Economic Development does, and that's recruiting new industry to the area. The first question I always get, do you have an educated workforce? And I could probably say, yes, we do, because we've got a Board of Education that knows how important it is to give the faculty and staff in our schools the resources that they need to successfully educate our students and make sure that they are prepared for the workforce tomorrow, whether it is graduating high school and immediately going into the workforce in one of our skilled trades, going to technical college, or going to the university system and advancing up the elevator, like I like to say. So this partnership is, is a component that very few communities in the state have. We're blessed to be able to be awarded that. And industries around the globe are looking at Waycross and Ware County because of this partnership, because of what y'all are doing, what our educators are doing, and our industries are paying attention and they are glad to see that this is taking place. So thank you to Dr. Barber and Ms. Bennet Callahan for being a part of this and making this work.
So we received the award at the Economic Development Conference in September and then because of the hurricane, we have not been able to really publicize it till now. Each of you tonight at the conference, they gave us window decals and bumper stickers. So you have one there if you would like to utilize those in any way. And then I can hold that. And they gave us one award and I thought, well, we can't just have one award because we wanted one at the high school, one here, and one in the Economic Development Office. So Ms. Carter at the high school has a new glow forge machine and she took the award and replicated it and made two more. So we have three identical awards. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Ruben Bauer if he'd come up or superintendent and any of our board chair or anyone else wants to get in the photo. I'd like to present the award, this one to Jason to take back and put in the Economic Development Office, so we can tout this as industries. Okay, I'll roll right into our next awards, which is the state winner for youth apprenticeship completer year, the year and the Southeast District Apprenticeship Student of the Year. Our work-based learning program tracks students who complete the youth apprenticeship program as they go on to receive their post-secondary credentials and work experience. And Ms. Callahan does a great job of taking those outstanding students and applying for state awards. And one of those, I do want to just mention briefly, she cannot be here tonight. She actually lives up and works in Asheville now, but the youth apprenticeship takes students their, their career goals, their pathway alignment, and we, we work with those students to prepare them for the world of work. And Cully P. Richardson, she was a youth apprenticeship student in work-based learning at work at Ware County High School. And while here, she got her CNA through our high school program. She worked at Waycross Internal Medicine with Dr. Williams and Dr. Bright. And then she went on to college earning her bachelor's from Georgia Southern and she is currently slated to graduate. She's in college now up in Asheville and slated to graduate in 2026 as a certified physician's assistant. So she's a great example of what the youth apprenticeship program does. She was named the state winner for the youth apprenticeship completer of the year. So this summer, up in Duluth at our conference, she was given that award. She was given a $250 scholarship from our local work-based learning program and she also received a $500 scholarship from Governor Kemp's Youth Apprenticeship Program at the Workforce Summit back in earlier this fall. So let's give, let's give Cully a round of applause. And then Reagan Dixon was a youth apprenticeship student in Ms. Callahan's work-based learning program, her junior and senior year. And through this and because of her hard work and dedication, she was nominated for the student of the year award because she's just a great example of, of the program and what it does. Reagan was ranked 21st in her graduating class of 354 with a 98.645 GPA. A great, well-rounded student, she completed the business pathway, obtained her certification, completed advanced and dual enrollment courses, also participated in work-based learning, was a varsity softball player all four years of high school, and now she's continuing her education and softball career with a fully paid scholarship at Jacksonville University. And she's just a great, dedicated student because of her work there at college and the softball program. She was unable to be with us tonight, but her mom, Ms. Tanya Dixon, is here and I'm going to ask Ms. Callahan if she would come forward with Ms. Tanya and present her plaque as well as her scholarship for $250. So let's give Reagan a round of applause. All right, now you have the floor.
All right. Tonight, we have, well, we have two golden, well, two golden achievement awards, one for October and November. I thought we missed you, Dr. Tarr, I think in October, didn't we, due to the storm? So we'll go ahead and call Dr. Tarr up tonight and she's going to present our golden achievement award for October for Ware Middle.
I am thrilled to share with everyone some information about two fantastic staff members at Ware County Middle School. First of all, it's with great pleasure that I introduce Ms. Kaylee Fullford as Ware Middle's Golden Achievement Award recipient. As our school secretary, Kaylee has proven herself to be an indispensable asset. Her tireless dedication, versatility, and leadership go far beyond the scope of her official role, making her truly deserving of this recognition. Kaylee is the very definition of a jack of all trades, and no pun intended, jack. From managing the front office with seamless efficiency to handling the needs of students, teachers, and parents, she ensures that the school runs smoothly on a daily basis. Her organizational skills are unparalleled, enabling her to juggle countless tasks while maintaining a welcoming and professional environment. Whether it's scheduling substitutes, record keeping, or handling unexpected challenges, Kaylee is always several steps ahead, ensuring that nothing slips through the cracks. Beyond her administrative duties, Kaylee is the heart of our school. Her genuine warmth, patience, and problem-solving ability make her the go-to person for everyone in the building. She is often the first to arrive and the last to leave, consistently going the extra mile to make sure the school is a positive and efficient space for learning. Kaylee's dedication to the school is not just in what she does, but in how she does it. She approaches every task with a positive attitude and open heart and a clear commitment to the success of the school. Her ability to remain calm under pressure and her willingness to take on any challenge makes her the backbone of the school's operations. In short, Kaylee Fullford embodies the spirit of the Golden Achievement Award. Her hard work, selflessness, and unwavering commitment to the school community are qualities that make her not only an exceptional school secretary, but also a true leader within our school. And we're so proud to honor her as Ware Middle's Golden Achievement recipient.
I can test all Dr. Tarr. She's had to put up with me for several years. As a grandparent.
Now, our certified Golden Achievement Award goes to Mr. Zach Williams. Mr. Williams goes far beyond the typical responsibilities of a band teacher, demonstrating a deep commitment to his students, their families, our school, and our community. One of Mr. Williams' most remarkable achievements is growing the band program to well over 150 students, a testament to his passion, dedication, and the inspiring environment that he has cultivated. Under his leadership, the band has flourished and students from all walks of life have been drawn to the program. His ability to foster a love of music and create a welcoming, inclusive atmosphere has allowed students to thrive and encouraged many to join the band who may not have considered it otherwise. Mr. Williams has a rare gift for building positive relationships with his students, motivating them to succeed both inside and outside of his band classroom. He takes a genuine interest in each student's personal and academic growth, encouraging them to push their boundaries and discover their full potential. His students often describe him as a mentor, not just a teacher, as he takes time to understand their individual needs, interests, and goals. By fostering these connections, Mr. Williams creates a learning environment where students feel valued and empowered to excel in all aspects of their lives. Mr. Williams consistently exceeds his contractual duties. He dedicates countless hours before and after school to ensure his students succeed, offering extra opportunities for them to practice and rehearse. He's often found working late into the evening and over weekends, arriving early to prepare for upcoming events, always striving to perfect his students' performances. During concert season, Mr. Williams works tirelessly to coordinate logistics, ensuring that performances are professionally executed. He handles everything from setting up the equipment, organizing the stage, and managing student transportation for off-campus performances. His attention to detail and willingness to take on extra tasks makes each event seamless, providing his students with valuable, memorable experiences. In summary, Mr. Zach Williams goes above and beyond his duties every single day. His passion for teaching, his unique gift for connecting with and motivating students, and his tireless efforts make him an outstanding, standing candidate for the Certified Golden Achievement Award. He not only teaches music, but also instills life lessons in his students that will resonate far beyond the band room and the boardroom.
And then for the November Golden Achievement Award, we have Buckley, right?
Yeah.
Waresboro.
Waresboro. Good evening. Thank y'all for having us. We'll start out tonight with our classified Golden Achievement recipient. I'm honored to recognize Ms. Terry Damagala as the classified Golden Achievement recipient for Waresboro Elementary for the 2024-2025 school year. Ms. Terry has served as our custodian at Waresboro for 10 years now. She is a perfectionist who takes a great deal of pride in her craft. Our school is consistently recognized for its cleanliness. Our floors especially always seem to sparkle even as the year progresses. Ms. Terry is always dependable and very approachable amongst our staff and our students. She is always quick to help when a need arises. We are blessed to have her and she is a valuable asset to the Eagle family. All right, moving to our certified Golden Achievement recipient. I'm honored to recognize Mrs. Annie Russell as the certified Golden Achievement recipient for Waresboro Elementary for the 2024-2025 school year. Ms. Russell is a 14-year veteran educator who has served Waresboro Elementary as a special education co-teacher for the past six years and as a peer professional for the eight years prior to that. She monitors student progress, leads instruction, plans collaboratively, implements small group reading interventions, and assures students to receive their appropriate accommodations to meet their educational needs. Ms. Russell works predominantly as a fourth grade co-teacher in our math and ELA classrooms. She has been a fixture on our fourth grade hallway and can be credited for having a major part in the success of this grade level. Ms. Russell has become an expert in her field and has been willing to help and guide other special education teachers with various duties and paperwork. She is loved by all who meet and work with her.
All right. Tonight, we have Ms. Dee Dixon and I'm going to read this real quick. Are you want to read it? Is that the reason? Describing what this award is. Okay. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dee Dixon and I am a Student Information Systems Coordinator for Ware County. And tonight, I have the honor of presenting 41 Ware County employees with their PK through 12 Education Data Professionals Certification, along with Superintendent Bert Smith. These 41 staff members participated in a year-long online course that included 16 modules with 102 lessons and a cumulative research-based final project. The modules focused on topics like FERPA and data privacy, custody and guardianship, enrollment and registration, SLDS, student withdrawals, special education and 504, academic programs and FTE, McKinney-Vento foster care and military connections, ESOL and migrant students, student scheduling, transcript and student class, grade reporting and retention, student attendance and behavior, Georgia State Reporting FTE and CRDC, and school accountability and records retention. They complete their final project portfolio. They researched these topics within our local district and state policies. Investing in professional development is critical to providing the best possible support to our school community and in this course was a valuable resource used to invest in our new and veteran office personnel. I applaud your hard, hard work and dedication to Ware County schools and your career growth. Please come to receive your certificate from Superintendent Smith as I call your name. We are going to get a group photo. Instead of doing it one at a time, we'll just step over here. Beginning with Dr. Sean Benefield. Coralie Devane. Coralie Devane. Dee Dixon. Leslie Feivash. Kaylee Fullford. Julia Graves. Brittany Hendricks. Rebecca Hickox. Chesley Laracy. Sarah McCray. Amanda Schuing. Kelly Spikes. Sabrina Taft. Darlene Todd. Selena Tyer. Shakira Wesley. Bridgette White. Mildred Wilson. Did I miss anybody that's here? No. So I'm going to name those who couldn't be here tonight for unforeseen circumstances. Julie Aldridge, Tiffany Bowers, Robinette Carter, Paige Coker, Cheryl Griffin, Kiara Hall, Hallie Harper, Abby Howell, Val Lawton, Brittany Leggett, Kathy Maddox, Sherry Newman, Chrissy Patterson, Louise Pierce, Donna Russell, Faith Tanner, Michelle Tatum, Chelsea Thomas, Rachel Tooten, Sierra White, and Jenny White. Please help me congratulate these data professionals.
All right, tonight we have Ms. Solomon. I see several staff members from Ruskin Elementary, and she's going to come give us a report from the Blue Ribboned Schools of Excellence. So I will turn it over to Ms. Solomon at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the Board of Education, Superintendent Smith, and the Ware County community. As you are aware, Ruskin earned its way off of the state's mighty TSI list, has earned PBIS distinguished status for two years, and has earned an award for the Georgia Department of Education for its reading efforts, right? So with the vision in place that Ruskin inspires student excellence, I gave a charge to the staff, right? Okay. That we make application to the Blue Ribboned Schools of Excellence to see if a national educational group would assess that we had all of the qualifications to earn their award. Well, the national assessors visited us in September, and we will present their findings. Okay, so y'all listen up. So I'm going to kind of talk about what we had to do to prepare for the visit and what took place during the visit. So there were several tasks that had to be completed prior to the assessor's visit. One task was we had to assign survey codes to all faculty, staff, parents, grades K through 5, and students in grades 3 through 5. There were requirements on the number of surveys that had to be completed, and thankfully, we had around 200 parents complete the survey and 100% in all other areas. We also had to create a very large notebook showcasing our school along with student data for the past three years, curriculum guides, software information, MTSS schedules, POC information, and so much more. On the day when the assessors came to our school for two days, on the first day, the assessors were on our campus, and they met with a parent focus group, a teacher focus group, and a student focus group. They also met with the admin team over the span of their visit. On day one, the assessors observed all classrooms to see our wonderful teachers and students in action. On day two, the assessors met with our admin team to review their findings, our survey data, and our action plan. I want to share some responses with you from each of the meetings held on the first day. During the parent meeting, the assessors asked two questions. The first one being, what makes Ruskin Elementary School a great place to learn? There were many parent responses, but this is one that we chose for tonight. It's like a family. Teachers care about our kids, nurture our kids, and build relationships with them so they can learn. They still check on our kids. The second question they were asked is, if you were given a magic wand, what would you change, add, or delete for Ruskin Elementary School? And one of the responses that we felt was a need that we do need to work on was to add more in parent involvement opportunities for them to come out to the school. During the student meeting, which I sat in on, which is very funny, it was very long. It took about 45 minutes. They asked two questions, and these two questions took 45 minutes for them to gather all the student responses. But the first question was, what makes Ruskin Elementary School a great place to learn? One of the responses was, the students help us, I mean, the teachers help us learn and encourage us to do better things in life. If you were given a magic wand, what would you change, add, or delete for Ruskin Elementary School? Give the answers to the test with a magic wand. There were many other funny answers to that, like at a water park, a winter park, all kinds of things. During the teacher-focused meeting, these two questions were asked. What makes Ruskin Elementary School a good place to teach and students to learn? One of the responses was, we put students first and look at what is best for the student. If you were given a magic wand, what would you change, add, or delete about Ruskin Elementary School? More parent support at home and at school.
So I'm going to review the results of the surveys that we had, and it's broken down into nine different categories that we had to establish as, you know, that we were proficient in these areas and that we could kind of prove that we were doing well in these areas. So there were student focus and support, school organization and culture, challenging standards and curriculum, active teaching and learning, technology integration, professional community, leadership and education vitality, school, family, community partnerships, and indicators of success. So those were the nine areas. As we go through these results, you'll see them color-coded as you see on the screen. The areas of strength were 2.3 or greater, needs improvement was that next area, and then, of course, immediate action required was less than 1.5. You will also see certain areas marked in green, and those were the critical areas that were required to be 2.3 or greater for us to receive this recognition. So we won't go through every line item, but you can kind of get an overview of, this is the student focus and support, and you can see the areas that were critical. We met in all of those areas. You see the 2.0 with the orange color. That was an area that was a need, and that was student voice and planning. So part of receiving this recognition is we had to, and we'll talk about this more a little bit later, but we had to recreate an action plan that either shows what we were going to do to address it or show what we were already doing. And as we go through this, you'll see most of these things were things that we were already doing. We just had to document so that they could see it for themselves. So for student voice and planning, we have several student groups that we have. We have Jaguar ambassadors. We have a safety patrol. We have house leaders. We also use PBIS. We send out surveys to students for their input on what they like. So we just had to provide that information to them to show how we do incorporate student voice and how we use students in our planning process. Student organization and culture. As y'all know, we are a PBIS distinguished school. This is our second year. We're working for our third year right now. So we met in all areas here. We are very proud of our culture. Challenging standard and curriculum. You see, we met in all areas. I know that's kind of small, but the one area that is red is foreign language. Well, there is no foreign language curriculum in Georgia. Apparently, there are in other states, but elementary-age students have to learn or be involved in some sort of foreign language. However, we were able to provide some evidence of how we incorporate foreign language in our everyday life at Ruskin. For example, as y'all know, we do have the highest EL population. So our kids are automatically exposed to some of that culture and some of the different languages. We do a Hispanic Heritage Month where we talk about the culture. We incorporate the different language. I just love the student announcements of the month of Hispanic Heritage Month because we have one student who is not Spanish-speaking, but she can say the words just perfectly, and it's just the most fun everywhere. And it's actually one of our teachers' children. So it's just so fun to hear her use the words. So our kids get that exposure as well. But we've also incorporated, we have a monthly club day. And so one of our kind of future initiatives is going to be to add a Spanish club. We do have a Spanish-speaking staff member who has already agreed to take that on as a club, so we can incorporate that even more. So we included all that in our action plan. Active teaching and learning, you see achievement is not met. I'm going to hold off on that and talk about that in a later slide, so just remember that. We'll come back to it. So we'll keep going. Technology and integration, we met in all areas, so we're very proud of that. Professional community. So we scored that just slightly under the mark on professional development for teachers and for non-teaching staff. However, we have a multitude of opportunities for teachers and for non-teaching staff. For teachers, we do PLCs on a monthly basis. We have, you know, new curriculum, professional learning that they've been involved in, new standard professional learning that they've been involved in. Also, Housefield 538, they are now involved in the literacy modules that they're all participating in currently, if some of them have already finished. So there's lots of opportunities. We just, again, had to kind of, and that just touches the tip of the iceberg on that. So we had to just include all of that in our action plan to show that they do have those opportunities for professional learning. Our non-teaching staff are also, now, they will also be a part of those modules, those literacy modules. They have a different version of it, but that's just rolled out. But we also have a PLC that our non-teaching staff participate in, and they meet on a regular basis. They do book studies. They do master teacher training. They do a lot of different things through that as well. But also, we also have our RISA-level literacy director coach. She's going to be coming and doing some PL with our pair professionals as well, too. So we're super excited about that because she's going to really help us out in some areas. Leadership and educational vitality, we met in all areas on that, so we're proud of that. And then this is the area that Ms. Hayman mentioned as well. And this is an area that we know we need to work on. But even knowing that we still need more work on it, we did have lots of things in place already. So volunteers, you know, a lot of people who filled out the surveys might not know all the volunteers or assistants that we get from others that they're just not aware of, such as the weekend meal brags, the Christmas assistant, the volunteers that we have that come out and read, just our community partnerships with Unison, with the YMCA, with the REG department. And that, again, just touching the tip. There are so many more that I'm not even mentioning. But there are lots of opportunities for volunteers that we have had, but just maybe not everybody knows about all of those, just because if you don't see it all, you don't always know it all. And then the parent education, we also, you know, we do curriculum nights. We do lunch and learns. We do a GMAAS education night. There are lots of opportunities, but to be honest, we don't always have the participation that we would hope for, that we would like. And that is an area that we, you know, we're always striving to do better in and to get more people in. And so, you know, again, that is an area that we know we can continue to grow and to work on. So we do know that as a goal for ourselves. But we did document all the things that we already do have in place. Before school, I think this is another one of those things that maybe some of these bigger cities or other areas may have time to do a before-school program. I mean, y'all know, we start early, so we don't have that before-school program opportunity, but we do a lot of before-school stuff. You know, that's our time for acceleration, remediation. We can do some intervention time during that if it works out just right. So there is a lot of before-school opportunity, but we don't have programs. And again, we just documented all of that. After school, we've had GESA in the past. We have our after-school program that will be starting in January. We do a GMAAS blitz. So we have lots of, we do Quiz Bowl practices and science fairs. All those are after-school. So we do have a lot of after-school programs, and perhaps like maybe some parents aren't aware of those if their kids aren't involved in all of those programs. But we do have a lot of those after-school opportunities. And then the indicators of success, we met in all of those areas. And so now going back to that achievement, when I said, y'all, hang on just a second. Let's get to that next. I really want to kind of hit home on these scores because you can see how much we have grown over the years. So if you can look at our 2019 scores, overall ELA, math, and science, they weren't wonderful, but you can see that we improved by 2022. Still, you know, we still had lots of growth. But by 2023, you know, we were really starting to see some more success. Again, we still have areas to grow in, and we know that, and we're still hard at it. But you can see our hard work at work in these scores and the hard work that our kids put in and that our teachers put in. And so this last slide for me, because I know I've talked a lot, is, shows you all the areas that we had. You had to have 80% in each area in order to be awarded the recognition or the award. So the only area that we did not meet 80% in was that school, family, community partnership. But again, we were able to provide the evidence that we needed to, to show them the things that we're doing that, through our action plan, that we were able to be recognized even in that area. So that's how we were able to achieve the award. Okay, our areas of strength, after the assessors came in and did their interviews and reviewed the data, they gave us 20 areas of strength. The mission and vision statement, student handbook, results-based practices, school improvement plan, safe place, welcoming culture, our safety plan, special education courses along with gifted and talented courses, special needs, least restrictive environment, our curriculum aligns to standards, grade level, teachers collaborate frequently and for best practices, school webpage, technology systems, monitor achievement, continuous improvement, professional development, two-way communication, our breakfast program, student growth, and all students assessed. These were our next steps that they gave us, and we implemented most of these, if not all of these, immediately. Celebrate the strengths report, review and analyze the action plan blueprint, meet with leadership team to discuss the reports and present to faculty. There were a few areas that Ms. Crosby discussed that needed extra documentation, and we provided that on the action plan and focus on reflecting and collaborating.
So in September, we actually received this information that we were awarded this award, okay? But the hurricane came in. I found out the day. I found out the day before we were let out for the hurricane. All right, so, but here we are, okay? So as you can see, we are doing marvelous things at Ruskin. And based on the National Assessor's findings, they have bestowed the highest honor of being a Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Lighthouse School for Ruskin. And we're headed to the conference in Orlando during the week of December 2nd to receive this award. Additionally, we will have a celebration at the school on November 22nd. You all will receive an invitation. Hope you can come out. I am very thankful to you, Ruskin Elementary. We worked very hard at Ruskin Elementary School. And for those of you who've been in this game a long time and you've seen where Ruskin was at one point in time and where we are now, you know what has transpired. It's hard work, and it has to be collaborative. And we're all working together. Now, we fuss a little bit, okay? But we get it done. So thank you for your support. We'll see you when you come out.
Congratulations, Ms. Solomon, and to all the faculty and staff at Ruskin. I know it's a lot of work y'all put into this, and I know the board is proud of you and your efforts. And we look forward to seeing the continuous growth at Ruskin. So congratulations once again. I do, but go ahead.
Hey, this is my last meeting.
That's the last time I'm saying hi.
You seem to be happy. That's the thing, that's the thing, man.
That's right.
A little bit of it.
So in the high schools?
High schools, everybody.
Right, right, okay.
Ware Middle.
Waycross Middle would be.
Real proud of all y'all. That is a lot of work. Math and science, too. That's the toughest ones. I enjoy it. Math and science, those were tough, even in elementary. By the time you get to use one curriculum, they go ahead and change it. It's the same thing that high school sort of went through. It's different.
It's different. Remember, Waycross Middle used to be a lighthouse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the same thing.
Yes, yes. Is that something I said? Okay. Item seven.
Seven, recommend for approval payroll and disbursements for the month of October 31st, 2024 in an amount of $6,572,791.10. The financial report was given last night. The enrollment report as of November 5th reflects 5,945 students. Last year's number was 5,972. Significant calendar dates, the 14th will have second quarter progress reports, and then no school for Thanksgiving holidays on November 25th through 29th. That's it.
Okay. Heard superintendent's report. Do I have a motion?
So moved, seconded.
Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Superintendent, item number eight.
Yes, recommend for approval the minutes of the meetings listed from October 7th, 8th, 24th, 21st and 31st.
21st, right.
21st.
Okay. Heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved, seconded.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion. Coach Ganis seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number nine.
Yes, recommend for approval the 25, 26 school calendar.
Heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Coach Ganis seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Superintendent, item number 10.
Yes, recommend for approval the request from Director of Special Projects to enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs to administer the Dependence Education Assistance Chapter 35 program. This program provides education and training opportunities to eligible dependents of veterans who are permanently disabled due to a service-related condition or who died while on active duty or a result of a service-related condition. This partnership will allow the Ware County Schools to support eligible students by facilitating access to these educational benefits, ensuring they receive the assistance they need to pursue their academic goals.
Heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved, seconded.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, item number 12. We need to divide that into number 11. Excuse me. Agreement, approve agreement with University of West Georgia.
Yes, recommend for approval the University of West Georgia's request to establish a mutual agreement with Ware County Schools outlining mutual expectations, responsibilities and terms for educational leadership candidates completing field-based and clinical experience in the district.
All right, heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Waters made the motion. Ms. De seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 12 now. Okay, we need to separate that. I need to, let's do 12A first.
Okay, 12A, yes, recommend for approval the request from Jessica Cox, media specialist at Waycross Middle to seek funds by applying for the supplemental media and resource technology grant provided through SCSOM REMC. Funds will be used to purchase books for the media center.
All right, heard recommendation, superintendent for 12A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion. Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number B, 12A.
Yes, recommend for approval the request from Amy Mansell, media specialist at Ware Middle to seek funds by applying for the supplemental media and resource technology grant provided through SCSOM REMC. Funds will be used to update the school's book collection.
All right, I will be abstaining due to family relationship. You've heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Ms. De seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I put, I'm not opposed, but I'm staying. I better not oppose. All right, number 13, item number 13.
Yes, recommend for approval the field trips for Center, Memorial Drive, Ruskin, Williams Heights, Waycross and Ware Middle and Ware High.
Heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved, seconded.
All right, Coach Ganis made the motion. Mr. De seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval fundraisers at Ruskin, Waresburg, Ware Middle, Waycross Middle and Ware High.
All right, heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ms. Superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval the request for the use of Ware Middle's auditorium and gym lobby on February 22nd, 23rd, 2025 for the Jehovah's Witnesses Bible Study classes at usual and customary fees. The request was made by Mark Briers. And then recommend for approval the use of Ware Middle's auditorium on December 13th, 14th, 24th for Center Stage Studios Nutcracker Event at usual and customary fees. The request was made by Macy Stewart.
All right, heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Ms. Waters made the motion. Ms. De seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ms. Superintendent. Let's see. The 17.
Yes, recommend for approval the personnel report as presented in sub-items A, B and C as presented.
Heard recommendation, superintendent, do I have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
All right, Coach Ganis made the motion. Mr. Tyre seconded. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 18, other. We'll start with Ms. Nelson. Do you have any?
We're going to miss you.
We'll miss you, too.
All right, Ms. Etheridge.
Just kudos to the Ware County High School and Waycross Middle School, Ware County Middle School for the math leaders and to the students and the teachers for a job well done. And I believe there were elementary schools.
There was a center, wait, no, Center in Waresburg had the literacy.
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 Some growth in literacy.
Congratulations to all of you.
That's right.
All right, Ms. Tyre.
Well, congratulations to our football team for making the playoffs. First game will be Friday night here playing Tugger. It's going to be tough.
All right, Coach Ganis.
I'd like to piggyback on what else has been said. Congratulations to all our teachers, staff, students. This goes to show you right here how hard they're working to make something and provide an opportunity for our students. And our students are working hard. I mean, we get a bad rap a lot of times about public education. But there are a lot of good kids out there that are working very hard, and they'll be, one day be our leaders and, you know, the people that we will hopefully continue on what they've learned. And to you, Mr. Smith, thanks for six years. I know it's been a rocky road. It's been up and down. And so we appreciate everything you've done for us. You know, I know when you get out there, you'll learn real fast. You can only play so much golf and just find you something to do and stay busy. And as you go along, you'll be surprised how many students, former students, you'll meet in life and cross paths with them. And they'll come up to you and say, hey, you remember me? You remember me? And whether you remember them or not, that lets you know that you are and have made an impact on a lot of people. So again, thanks and congratulations. And I hope your wife's got her honeydew list along.
All right, Mr. Dees.
Congratulate all the award winners, students, faculty, staff, et cetera. That's what makes us tick.
Amen.
That's how we do what we do.
That's right.
Also, thank the work for watching over us and the times passed here and bringing us back together. Thanks to Mr. Smith. We talked about bookends from COVID to hurling and everything in the world.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Waters.
I think Ruskin staff has it right when they said it's all about the students. And tonight was a beautiful display of that in every presentation that we had. And thank you for the pleasure to work with you the last one and a half years.
Okay.
It's been a pleasure. Well, one thing, again, I'm just, I'm proud just to be a part of it. That's the thing. And then thank y'all again. I can't thank y'all enough for the opportunity. I'm honored to even serve in this. But I'm excited because of what's coming. I know even with the meeting yesterday with the strategic planning in place, we've got some good things going on here. And if we don't have any interruptions like COVID or the weather, we're going to see Ware County just do amazing things. And I'm just excited for that. I know Dr. Barber's going to do an amazing job. He's the right man for it. So I thank y'all again. One thing I do want to mention, Friday, I forgot to mention the other day, or earlier, special, what? The Fall Fest, Central Kids Day at Ware Middle, starting at, what time? 9:00 at Ware Middle at the track. That's when all the, they have, yeah. So if you have time or get a chance just to peek in, those kids are, they just love that day. And it just puts a perspective on life that, you know, we don't have it as bad as we think. So anyway, thank y'all again. I appreciate y'all, and I just sign it out.
One word of advice left away by my father-in-law, always keep a job or you'll never have a day off.
That's right. That's right. That's right.
Also, Mr. Smith, I'd like to thank you for all that you've done for our system. As Mr. Dees mentioned, you started with COVID and ended with hurling.
That's right.
The ups and downs that we had no control of whatsoever. But we made it through, and I'm proud of this board. We can disagree, but we can still love each other when we disagree. I'm very proud of that board, proud of the board for that. And the honeydew list, it keeps growing. It'll keep growing, I tell you. Been retired 15 years, and I'm 20 years behind. All right, I have to, October, November, 2024, we give our staff members that have lost family members. We'd like to go over each one of those. Melanie Cox, teacher at Williams Heights and the loss of her grandmother, Carol Riggsby. Dallas Stewart, paraprofessional at Waycon Elementary and the loss of her father, Russell Stewart. Dr. Amanda Langford, assistant principal at Ware Middle and the loss of her brother-in-law, Joey Langford. Chris and Tasha Musgrove, teachers at Wesboro Elementary and the loss of Tasha's father, Reverend Larry Barber. Chad Starling, athletic director of Ware County Middle and the loss of his father, Johnny Starling. Family and friends of Barbara Bird, former teacher and principal at Center Junior High. Jennifer Fales, teacher at Ware County High School and the loss of her mother-in-law. Helen Fales, former teacher at Ware County High School. Sharika Dotson, paraprof at Williams Heights Elementary and the loss of her mother, Linda Clark. Antonio Jackson, custodian at Ware County Middle and the loss of his mother, Wanda Jackson. Cassie Page, teacher at Center Elementary and the loss of her mother-in-law, Mildred Page. And Leslie Wheeler, instructional coach at Memorial Drive and the loss of her mother-in-law, Sandra Snow. All our condolences go out to these families that have lost loved ones. Let's just keep them, their thoughts and prayers with these employees or our partners. Keep them, keep them in mind when you, when we say prayers because it's, anytime, no matter whether you're young or whether you're old, losing a loved one does hurt. And we know only one, one being can help us out at that time.
Did you mention Glenn Jones?
I did not mention Glenn Jones. Glenn Jones was former principal of Crawford Street. I know he had other jobs. I can't remember all of those, but I read in the paper where he had passed away. He was a military guy, too. I'm pretty sure of that. I remember that about him. When systems consolidated, I got to know him a whole lot better there.